Consider a vote to approve the consent agenda unless someone would like to take something out of it.
I would love to remove 3.7.
3.7, personnel appointment of head teachers. Something you want to say about that?
I would like to go on that separately. I would like to only see one head teacher. I would like to not see the position split.
Can we bring that up later, John?
Yes.
So it's out. Do I have a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda?
I so moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, I want to move up 10-1. And this is to consider discussing vote to award school committee scholarships. So this is the best meeting we have of the year. I've gone and said that to some people. See all these wonderful kids going to college and their great accomplishments they have. So what we're going to do here is I'm going to read...
Excuse me.
Oh, yeah?
I had to refuse myself.
Okay, go ahead. So what we're going to do is I'm going to read the names and the scholarship, any amount of money. And Jana and Rita who picked the winners for this, they're our scholarship committee. I was going to say some words about the kids. Rita's going to give the check and certificate. I'm going to take a picture. Then we're going to take a picture of everybody at the end, just the kids though. Paul's going to be taking off pictures.
All in favor?
All right, so do I have a... do I have a motion to vote to award community scholarships?
You have a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. So the first one is a Ruth Coombs Vogel Memorial Scholarship. Emma Magnewski was the winner of that. That's a $500 award. She's not here today. She is at a camp, I think.
In New Hampshire.
In New Hampshire. So I'll pass that off to you.
Okay. Would anybody like to say anything about Ruth Coombs, who's still in the... who she was?
Ruth Coombs Vogel.
Vogel.
Yeah. Well, she was our mother and she was a teacher, educator. That's why this is important to us, to hope the winner be going into education and her loves music. We lost her last year, so this is an extra special one to be able to continue on her legacy.
But then let me tell you about one who's a very special person. Emma plans to pursue a teaching degree at Bridgewater State University and become an elementary school teacher. She was a member of both the Portsmouth High School marching band and the vocal ensemble for four years. Emma served as one of the two liaisons to the school improvement team. She volunteers at a Cokesick Chapel. As a National Honor Society member, Emma was the Wilbur McMahon School tutoring leader. And she's not here, so we'll save her.
Oh, probably you or her, yeah.
Okay, the next one is a Leslie Briggs Coombs Memorial Scholarship. Jewel Boshman was the winner of that. That's a $500 certificate. Go ahead.
Anything we can learn about Leslie Briggs Coombs?
Yep. Leslie Briggs Coombs was our grandfather, from others, and he was an educator. He taught chemistry at Berkeley Technical College. Well, he made it into a four-year college, which later became Southeastern Massachusetts University. And, well, and his father is the next one.
Yes.
Yeah. So we won't go on to that one. All right. So education definitely a priority.
Yes.
Your family, that's a winner. Well, Julia is an excellent student with a 3.96. She was the recipient of several awards, including a history award, Latin award, scholastic award, as well as being a member of the National Honor Society. Julia was involved in drama, lacrosse, and the ski and snowboard club. She plans to study nursing at Cedarville University and become a nurse practitioner.
Julia, where's Cedarville? Okay, the next recipient. The next award is James Webster Coombs Memorial Scholarship. Paige Shapiro was the winner of that one. That was a $1,000 student.
Yes, James Webster Coombs was our great-grandfather and he was superintendent of the schoolhouses here in Little Compton many eons ago. So as you can tell, the education has run through our family and it's very important. And we appreciate... The opportunity to be able to carry on their legacy.
Well, thank you so much for doing that. And I will tell you about Paige. Paige was a member of the vocal ensemble at Portsmouth High School, making it to the All-State course each year. She was active in cross-country, receiving the Rookie of the Year award. Also involved in the theater club, the journalism club, the Language Honor Society, and was the vice president of the Space Exploration. In addition to lacrosse and swimming, Paige was also a library volunteer and volunteer at Wilbur McMahon School. She was an excellent student with a 3.93 GQ. Paige plans to study journalism and publishing and become a journalist.
Thank you. Congratulations.
My next award is the Anthony Roccoza Educational Fund Scholarship. Holly Kula was the winner of this one. This is for $350.
Molly was captain of the girls varsity basketball team, which she played for four years. She also played soccer, unified volleyball, and was a member of the Portuguese club and the ski and snowboard club. Molly was a guidance aide, providing new student tours and general support. She has won several awards, including the state civic leadership award and the TED Talk Book Award. Molly is a hardworking student with a 3.39 GQ. She plans to attend Mary Mac College and pursue athletic training.
Our last award is the Doris E. Simmons Memorial Educational Scholarship. Olive Allen was the winner of this one. This is for $300.
Olive was a member of the Portsmouth High School cross-country indoor track and outdoor track teams, achieving All-State, All-New England, and All-American status. And, I'm sorry. She started out playing softball and tennis and with an open mind thought she would try running, among other things, like joining the stand-up paddleboard club and being a guidance aide. Olive's hurdled many challenges to be a successful student athlete and plans to pursue a degree in marketing at High Point University, where she will continue her running career.
Congratulations to Emma, Julia, Paige, Molly, and Olive. So I'd be remiss to say this was the year of the young lady of the scholarships. So really outstanding kids. I happen to know them all since they were little. Really great to see these kids succeed.
I have to say that this is the best part of being on the school committee as far as I'm concerned. Congratulations to Olive.
Yeah, we're going to get a picture. I'm going to take a recess here for five seconds. We'll use ourselves. You got a vote on that? No. Yeah, if we just go to what is up, we'll get a picture. You want to jump an superintendent? You're photogenic. Come on. In the scholarship committee. What do you want to take?
Four books.
All right, we're going to do 3.7. It's going to be a separate vote. And this is personnel appointment of head teacher for school year 1920. Olive, does this... Olive, do you want to say something?
I just feel that it should be a... it should be a one-person position. When we add other people to it, I think... One delegation. I do understand that Mrs. Whip was attending some trainings this past year, which made it difficult for one head teacher. But she's not attending those trainings this year. And I feel like she could win another shot with one head teacher.
This isn't a financial thing. This is... this is... how do you explain it? Continuity, what?
Continuity.
Can we hear from the principal and superintendent about how they decided to split this and why they feel okay about it?
Yes.
I support the principal's decision to split it. I did it at the beginning. I asked a lot of questions. She answered them thoroughly. Much of the rationale has to do with safety and availability. One teacher to come early, one to stay a bit later. So I agree with you on two.
In my tenure here at Wilbur McMahon, I've functioned with two head teachers and I've functioned with one. I do think that the distribution of labor, if you have two people that work well together, I think that that is a... that's a better distribution. It just makes it a little bit less taxing on one person. So I do think that it was my recommendation that we have two people do it. I talked to both of the individuals separately. But, you know, I kind of tried to weigh whether having one person was better than having two people. And I do think that given set of circumstances, that splitting it on two people can be mutually beneficial to all parties. And make for a safer, better learning school.
So we've done this before?
Yes.
This is the first year I've been here, but there's been... the two years prior to that, there were two. And I can't speak anymore.
And the reason we went to one?
One left for another position.
Oh.
So there were two appointed last year. You know, one left for an administrative position also.
Oh, yes. I was wondering. Gotcha. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I think there are pluses and minuses for each scenario. Because they don't have a reduced load, you really are adding to each play. So I do agree and I just support the principal's decision to hire both.
I'm going to call for a motion in a second, then we can still discuss it. I have a motion to appoint two head teachers this school year of 1920.
I so moved.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
All right, discussion, further discussion. Ed, the reason this is not a financial matter, does that mean that the two would be splitting, the one is taken?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We've got a aye. Thank you. Spotlight four, spotlight on excellence. I see nothing under there. I don't see anything. We'll go five, superintendent report. Confidential report connection with the investigation of Portsmouth High School following the death of student Nathan Bruno. I ask to put this on the agenda. I'm looking for follow-up and accountability from Portsmouth High School, particularly the superintendent, Anna Riley, and concerning the Nathan Bruno report. So I'd like to make the recommendation to charge our superintendent to contact Anna Riley. And, you know, again, we're looking for accountability and we're looking for some follow-up on the report. You know, we have 117 students over there that we love very much. And it's a very concerning report that came out. So we would like to know what they feel... you know, they need to tell us, you know, what they feel about the report. Whether it needs to go in the wastebasket or there's going to be policy changes or protocol changes. Because we have constituents that have contacted me that are concerned about it. So, you know, we compose 10% of the population over there. So that would be my recommendation. Anyone else who wants to discuss that? It's not a vote?
So I did read the report. It is very disturbing. It's very disturbing. And it is clear that change needs to be made. And I would be shocked if policies were not revised, particularly around the culture in the athletics department. So I would expect to see change. And as the liaison to the Portsmouth School Committee, I will bring back whatever information I have.
Thank you, Rita. Any further discussion?
I'm willing to do it. Members of the Little Compton Committee have expressed their anxiety over the report, contents of the report. And they need assurances regarding the safety and security of our students there. I've read the full report and noted the recommendations by the independent investigator.
Excuse me, have there been any consequences or changes since this report came out?
There have been some actions taken regarding the report. I'm looking at the recommendations and I know a few of them have already been enacted. Oh, there's your process.
The football coach is still in place, correct?
And that was one of the recommendations. So some of them have been enacted, some are in process.
So I think with timely manner, when you reach out to Anna Riley, I would imagine that August, August meeting, we will have some sense and some feedback from...
I would love to know if more than just yes, there's been changes in the change policies. I'd love to know what changes and what protocols are going to be followed specifically.
Correct in terms of the culture. The athletic program, the football program is not going to be... any of them are going forward.
Further discussion?
We all wish you... we all wish you...
All right. Thank you, superintendent. And we look forward to what you find out at our next meeting. Thank you. Finance report, Mr. McNamee.
Okay, we've completed the year and right now we're waiting and we've got a few bills coming in from payables and that. So we're looking at roughly a $65,000 deficit at this point in time before the transfer to capital here. I suspect that that number may get out a little bit because of some of the expenses that are coming in are coming in a little less than I projected. So at the next meeting, I'll probably have a 22 number for the FY 19 year. But at this point, I don't see any surprises coming out of the next month or so of these expenses. And as we move into the FY 20, we did have a reduction in state aid based on what we had projected. But some of that will be made up by a reduction in the health care rate instead of what we had projected. So we should make up some of that in short form and bring back the reduction costs.
Questions for our finance director? Do you know how much it's reduced by state aid?
From $13 to $14,000.
Further questions? Thank you, John. Seven, committee reports. Portsmouth School Committee liaison report. Are you here? They have not had a meeting?
They take a break.
They take a break? They have two meetings a month, right?
They do.
So I'll...
Down in August.
We'll let them have a break. Town Recreation Committee liaison report, nothing to report. Health and wellness?
Um, no, we'll get back to that in a minute.
You've got it. Policy subcommittee, we're going to leave that for down below. Ed, that's okay. Oasis subcommittee report, none today?
We have harpets in our first beets.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot the... I forgot the beets. I don't like beets, but...
They're big vegetables.
Sorry to stop on that.
Very important.
Stop on that vegetable. School Safety Subcommittee is not going to report today on that. Discussion items, survey results report Portsmouth High School students. Carolyn, we've been wrestling with this for a few months, me and you, haven't we?
We've been enjoying it.
So I want you to know the survey results came from myself years ago. And we can deliver a survey to the high school students from Little Compton to Portsmouth. And we have some trends.
I do.
What do you have for us?
Well, I have put together in a very informal way some of the results from this past survey of this year. There was a slight difference in the survey between this year and last year in which this year we added an optional field for students to indicate their grade level. So when they're... The same questions are asked. I was commenting on it to your school. And I think that the trends point to maybe just their readiness to move on from eighth grade and experience high school. That, this is just my personal opinion. I think that if you look at them, some of them do contain information that could identify students, which is why we're not releasing the detailed results publicly. But, yeah, there's trends towards they're ready for the independent high school.
So I've read them all, every one of them. And what I've come back is the kids here want backpacks. So tell me about backpacks. Lawyer, law school lawyer. Why can't the kids have backpacks here? Because they could have them in high school.
And you can. Safety is a balancing of risks. And the decision has been made here that it's one less thing that we want to worry about in this particular building. We want not to worry about at Portsmouth High School. They have a different policy and they are willing to take more risk in terms of what comes into school.
Should we know a policy, no backpacks?
Hey, most middle school students do. And we could get each kid a cinch sack, you know, a little back sack, what do you call it?
Cinch sack.
Yeah, back sack, not that sack.
Cinch sack.
Cinch sack.
So I would be in favor of that. So what do we have to do? Do we have to get a vote on it as committee?
There's a policy against backpacks, but now the policy against cinch sacks. So we could just...
How do you feel about cinch sack?
When I think about the effectiveness, does that matter? Advising on their options. And if you wish to do that, that's why is the current... what I can't address here is the current backpack in the policy or is it just the way it runs in school?
I haven't seen it in a policy. And I have my official policy folder here. I've got all the policies right here. There's no backpack in here.
Then let's just simply allow the superintendent, the principal, to say that kids can have whatever you call them. And that what they shouldn't bring, they shouldn't bring backpacks to school.
So it's going to practice here?
Well, they can bring backpacks to school, just not...
How do they run during the day?
We have little ones and some who have challenges in terms of ambulating. And adolescent moving with the backpack is going to not go... it's a unique campus. We have little ones here.
Maybe it's just the eighth graders who have cinch sacks.
It did come up a lot. I read all the data that more content of kids generated.
So also they want more Spanish. We won't beat that. Of course.
Well, we already provided that.
All right. More writing. They want to write more. They want more classwork. They don't want to be babysat as students because they feel like, you know, they get treated like babies here in Little Compton. That's, that comes through as a common thread. And they want more freedom, which I can see, you know, the kids want more freedom.
Yeah, I think...
I mean, I understand that.
What is that? What is freedom?
You know, so you put all that, you know, you put that all together and you make your own distinction of what's going on. And to me, I think they're looking for a little more, you know, a little more rigor, a little more, hey, give us a little more freedom, you know. So maybe it's just for the eighth graders that they get a cinch sack or whatever you want to do. So anyway...
We'll like to pay for it.
That's information for you, for you guys. You guys are the professionals.
We have rights for you.
I'm not. So...
The ZAP program that we initiated this year, and it's working, so we think it'll keep up. Zeros aren't permitted. So we are required, you know, we have raised the expectations for our middle schoolers. And so I think some of these kids missed some of those changes. The doubling down of Spanish one, the academic Spanish hours, the zeros aren't permitted policy. And writing, we do have, you know, there's a T of 3,000. Not everyone likes it, but it does lock in much more of our... And then our students have done it. So we have answered a lot of their, you know, their questions about their middle school years. I laughed at some of the responses. They're just so candid and authentic. You know, I just love high school kids when they respond to surveys. It's such a... it's such honesty. And I think Wilbur McMahon has responded to many of their concerns.
Further discussion? Okay. Yes, Russ?
I'm a little surprised at the backpack thing because this very same school committee shot down the idea of having a school resource officer. As though this was a country club, nothing to worry about. And now we're worried about the little kids themselves with backpacks? I'm just surprised.
I would say, just to hear that off the top of my head, I never considered a country club.
Oh, I said that, but...
Yeah. And I can, you know, I was very, you know, personally, that was a tough issue. And obviously we've got a hardened entrance. We've got a safety subcommittee. We're doing a lot of things to keep these kids safe. Yeah, that was a tough one. I was close.
Other concern, the backpacks, not just other students being hit by backpacks that are chock full, but also the concealment of, you know, dangerous items. Truck contraband, weapons, most middle schools, they do for various reasons.
All right, thanks.
Do I do?
Yes, well, sorry.
I just, what's in the handbook is a backpack or tote bag of some sort is suggested to assist in carrying any necessary articles back and forth to school. The bag must be able to fit into your child's locker. Safety note, it is very important that loose straps, keys, or dangling ornaments not be attached to the backpack as they might cause a safety hazard. And then due to safety concerns, students will not be allowed to have backpacks with them during the school run.
So that's in the student handbook?
That's, that language... That language, it was in existence prior to my comment.
In the handbook?
Yes.
So it's not a standalone policy, it's in the handbook?
It's in just about every middle school.
And I will say, one of the things that I know in this building is that we do have many small classrooms, so just that bags end up on the floor, people trip over them, there's not a lot of space.
That makes sense.
That's the biggest practicality for my faculty.
Makes sense.
And unlike Portsmouth campus that is more sprawling, our campus is very small, the kids are pretty much on the hallway all they want.
Ed?
Greatest concern to me is not the backpacks, but the fact that only 25% of the respondents felt that they were well-prepared for Portsmouth High School. I support the idea of having the survey.
Thank you.
It needs to be tweaked in some ways, and we need to narrow down those who were surveyed, perhaps just to freshmen. It doesn't seem to make sense to have juniors and seniors who have already responded, perhaps, responding in future with what might be the same comments. But I would also like to know what it would be that we would need to do, whatever redactions may be necessary, but I think that there is no benefit to the school community to have the survey and release the survey questions without releasing the results. Whatever needs to be done to do that, I would hope that we would be able to release the results and put it on the school website.
Okay, so let me just tackle a few new senior things, because I read that comment by that young lady, it's clearly a young lady, with that wonderful sprawling, two pages that she's sick of being asked this question after four years. Okay. But, and I get it, but maybe when you're a senior and you reflect back, maybe you've got something to offer. That's why I'd like to keep it that way. To release results, I love to release results, I think we're going to get in a tug of war with these folks over here about releasing results in the candy jar there, right? Can we release the results? There's no names?
The answer is, if it's, if you can reverse engineer and figure out who did, you know, that obviously has to be, you know, Kenny McGovern, because he's the only kid who was in the wheelchair in the school. He complained about the backpack that was serious to the library. That we can't do. What you can do, and I'm probably going to get kicked by the person sitting next to me, is that you can perhaps have somebody give a general report filtering out identifying information. So for example, if, you know, people complained about the school lunch, you know, five students complained about the school lunch, three people wanted more pizza, two people didn't like, didn't thought they were prepared for Spanish at the high school. You can put general comments, but if I've given the raw results, I don't think it would be appropriate because there are people in this room, and there are kids, frankly, who would be smart enough to reverse engineer and figure out that must have been Kenny McGovern who said that.
Sample is so small.
For example, the sample is so small, it's only at a primary.
And the other question is, how do you mandate, how do you make it a survey compulsory? You know, having 52 respondents seems insufficient.
You want all 117?
I want a clearer picture.
I'm sorry, on the survey itself, it was developed by...
What?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could look at the survey and see if there's another way to, you know, just kind of reinforce and maybe get a look more. I don't know.
Along those lines, I would just like to have on the table whether or not a survey is the best way to get the kind of information we're looking at. Having worked most of my life with adolescents, give them an anonymous survey on anything, and they're, you know, what you get back is colored very much by the fact that number one, they're in one of the busiest transitions of their lives, and number two, they're teenagers. I would like us to think about the possibility of focus groups, so that we invite kids back for a small discussion on a certain topic related to the transition, and there's dialogue rather than a piece of paper and...
So I like the focus group, I like the dialogue. I don't know if you've read them, they're pretty well-written, and I think the kids that don't want to take them, they'll take them. But the kids that do write on there, they give you good information, they're very thoughtful what they write, and they're smart kids. Some joke around, say so with those.
No, I don't question that, but I think we've got to take them into consideration. Like any kid I know from the transition from middle school to high school feels a huge leap.
Oh, yeah. I assure Portland middle school, I assure those kids who went to Portland Middle School would like to say some of the same things. Maybe not the baby, I did see babying in a lot of the responses, little baby, they babied us, or they still need to baby us. However, that is part of the preciousness of a small school when you have been there since you were four years old, and has to develop, it develops in no way since you were born. So what we could look at also is data. We could look at, we already do look report cards, I get access to report cards, and anonymize the data. Our ninth grade did quite well this year, so the last set of report cards probably from the reconfiguration, the freshman cabinet that they recommended. So maybe we'll see more positive results as our freshmen move up. Portsmouth High School is transitioning them better than Abbott, you know, as freshmen. They have a school within school, so the freshmen have their own schedule, their own area in the school, their own administrator, and I'm responsible. So it's much more responsible.
Well, I just want to commend you, Patrick, on the survey and for collecting data over years, and that if we can reinforce this process with maybe a little more data, maybe some focus groups, and we kind of make a robust, take approach like that, and...
And we should follow students beyond high school. We could look at post-high school plans, and goals, and who should raise, whether it's the trades, university, or taking the ASVAB, going to service.
Thanks for your attention, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Eight-two, student obesity and data and nutrition, very important, probably more important than my little survey, that's for sure. What's going on?
Yeah, no, we wanted to follow up on the last school committee news, where we discussed this and had a presentation by Chartwell's, and also on a series of wellness committees that we have this spring. I've met with Sonya and Lori to talk about our relationship with Chartwell's and what we think needs to change there, partly in response to the obesity statistics, but also out of concern for all of our kids and healthy eating. We want to really address the issue of prepackaged food with long shelf life and lots of preservatives that is a staple, particularly in our breakfasts, but I think also in some of our lunches. We want to address the sugar content of our children's diets here at school. We want to get statistics on that, we want to understand better why that is not something that USDA is concerned about, but we are very concerned about. And Lori is going to have a meeting with Nancy from Chartwell's and review some of these concerns and the kinds of changes that we expect and hope to see. We talked about the issue of chocolate milk and ice cream at some length, and we've talked about this on the Wellness Committee. Our feeling is that everything that happens in this school, including in the cafeteria, needs to be education. So the reason that we allow ice cream for middle schoolers is that they are still middle schoolers, and there can continue to be dialogue between them and their parents. And their parents have access online to be able to veto all card items that they don't want their children to have, and that can happen right in the cafeteria. So we want them to be able to have that choice in their middle school years and that dialogue, because when they get to high school, you know, they have unlimited choice, and we have very limited. So we think that those middle schoolers are really important. The chocolate milk issue, our feeling is that because we have to provide two kinds of milk, the best to provide are chocolate milk and low-fat milk right now, that that's the vehicle by which most of our kids will get the amount of milk and calcium that they need. So our plan is to leave that in place as is. We think that it's incredibly important that we do a lot of education with our parents about eating, and about health, and about diet, and about nutrition, and we are going to assemble the Wellness Committee this summer to try to plan what will take place at the open house. We will have a Chartwell's demonstration on beverages and on what comes in beverages that they need to know about, but we're also going to have some tips for parents that we can pass out at the table about BMI, about the fact that our BMIs here are very high, much higher than we want them to be, and that it has to be a team approach, it has to be distilled, but it also has to be for parents getting involved with their kids in those conversations.
It's tested. Our rating from the state with a high BMI, being so abysmal, BMI, I wrote BMI, I wrote BMI. Has that been shared with the parents yet?
It has been in the newsletter several times, and Sonya is going to highlight it in her August email to parents, so that we can begin the educational process and let them know what to expect in the coming school year. I'm also going to be working on a philosophy of nutrition, what we serve in relation, what we give our kids, and why we do it the way we do it, so that we have some context in which to base these decisions. And we'll take that draft and run this committee and into this committee, so that we can really start to tackle this.
So I guess there's no passing call to school talking about BMI? So we're going to have to chase them because it's so important.
Giving them data is, I think they're just flooded with it and information. I think educating all of us around BMI and the prorogres of shelf-stated foods that relate to obesity, so that was our charge for the year, and there is no place to my fresh vegetables.
So how far, Attorney John Anderson, how far can we go to get this information to parents? Can we send them something in the mail, says, do you know what your kid's BMI is? Or is that, we can't do that?
I mean, want to do that is a different situation, but can you do it?
Well, you know, we send it out, and then we say all these wonderful things that we want to do to combat it.
The answer is, you can communicate information like that to parents. The question is, how do we capture and release this information?
Well, we've got all this information, and we want to do something about it, and we have these wonderful people that are investing all this time in it, and we have an audience that's not listening.
And the answer is, is that you can do it to parents.
If we had had kids getting, a kid getting a headache because they couldn't see any glasses, I would hope we would let them know.
And the answer is, you can, but you wouldn't say you're negligent, irresponsible parent who gave your kid glasses. There's a possible way to convey information in a negative way, but from a legal perspective, you can convey the information in which way you can do it.
I mean, I think you should consider, you know, taking it directly to the exhibit of our logs.
I think I discussed that, we couch it in terms of education around nutrition, and as an invitation, if you're interested in contacting the school nurse regarding your child's BMI, which is part of your child's health record, please do so. So educate them first and invite them to access the...
Why don't we give them a BMI app, maybe a lot of their attention?
Because I think if they just get it, you know...
One of my concerns, we discussed specifically sending a letter home to parents saying, your child has a high BMI, is that the potential backlash could outweigh the advantages of doing that. I mean, having my child's BMI, nobody told me you were getting my child's BMI, I didn't know about that ahead of time, who are you to tell me how to raise my child, and what to feed them, et cetera, et cetera, which just throws us way back, and what we want to do is move forward on this. So we thought what we talked about doing is having a table at the open house where we might say, did you know Little Compton children have high BMIs? And hopefully that will draw parents over, and we can give them some information on that, and also say, if you would like to know your child's BMI, talk to the school nurse, so that they still feel that they have some control in this issue.
Sounds like it's in good hands to me. Ken?
Yeah, I would say as a parent, when we first discussed that we had done the BMI, you know, testing, I wasn't aware that that had happened with my kids, and I sort of sat here thinking, can they even do that without telling us? And I was sort of surprised that it had happened, I went home and I talked to my girls, and I remember asking and having this discussion around sharing the information at that meeting. So I love access to my girls' results, so I think either sending it out proactively, as you do whenever the eye doctor comes in and we get a slip that comes home if, you know, your kid didn't, you know, read the eye chart or whatever, or if you want to capture it, people could proactively ask if they want to, but either way, making it accessible, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you, when I talk to my friends about it, they talk to their kids as well, and I did get some feedback, so I guess the other question I had was, given this focus, are we going to be doing this on a regular basis and sort of checking in with the kids on how they're doing? Would they like that? Because I think this was done in the gym, right, from what I understand, so when I did talk to my girls about it, one of them especially was a little uncomfortable because it wasn't done, you know, like in her room, and I don't think other kids could read the scale, but there was a boy behind her in line, and she thought that the boy was looking over the shoulder, or whatever. So if we're going to do it going forward, I think there might be maybe a more agile way to do it.
I think that's something we should talk about if we can get Wellness Committee together this summer, because what we may want to think about doing is letting parents know because this has been identified, we will be checking going forward, and we're trying to set up a mechanism that would be confidential and accessible to parents.
And the information in the state report is all for pediatricians offices. Right. So it's a data point that all pediatricians block.
Right, it's a data point, it's a test measure, it's one data point, and it really doesn't give you a lot of information, and it's controversial. I think we are, we don't want to get caught up in the details of what a child's test measure is, it's how are we as a community in terms of our health and wellness and our lifestyle and our providing, the education people need to have to understand what healthy eating is. So I don't know if anyone's familiar with the Blue Zones by National Geographic Research, they now have some Blue Zones solutions, and I'm sharing this with Janet and the Wellness Committee, so we can look at ways to improve the community's approach to nutrition, to wellness, fitness, and make us a healthier community, not just whose BMI is over 25. So, and I think that's the way we can approach it.
The state data, I think, was about 20 points higher than our actual data. It was only Rhode Island pediatricians in the database. A lot of our kids go to Massachusetts, doctors. So it wasn't accurate, however, when the Wellness Committee decided to move forward with testing the kid to see if the data was accurate, because it was, I think, 53% in statehood. That can't be. It's down to 35%, still very concerning. I agree with Rita that we need to look at the aggregate and not, you know, keep this, anonymize it here, just like the state did, and not really drill down that far. BMI can be misleading, you can be skinny and still have a high BMI, and they call it ski fat, whatever, whatever, the doctor's saying about that. So it's not an accurate data point, but it is giving us a red flag, literally, it's bright red on the map of Rhode Island for Little Compton, it was shocking for us to get those results. Should we have, I found out about the BMI testing after the fact, and I wrestled with the decision that was made to move forward without my consent, and then I had to take myself out of it and think about the kids and their health and this community, and unique challenges here, and I felt that it was the right thing to do in retrospect, but I think that's what had been done, signs of part-time, being part-time superintendent. But I think that's what had been done, signs of part-time and then part-time support. I found out after the fact. And what I do, I do agree with, you know, that it should have been done, but not quite en masse in the gymnasium, which is definitely what it can be concerned about. But I mostly have concerns about the health of our kids.
Ed?
You saw that look on my face.
I see, I see. I see the look.
This is the first time that I have become aware, I'd ask for two clarifications. One is, the first is that my recollection is that at the meeting where this was discussed, Mrs. Dunn spoke and said that her data confirmed that Rhode Island survey was accurate, that there was no disparity. So now I'm hearing that there is some and it's reduced.
Yeah, and I think we, some of us were sort of having a side conversation with she said that. I think she said that it did confirm the results that we have a high percentage of overweight and obese kids. The state report was just Rhode Island pediatricians' data. And so it was about 52 or 53%. And then the school data, 100% of our kids. The data was 35%. Still very.
And my other question is that my, again, my recollection is, or perhaps it was not consumption, but my recollection is that Mrs. Dunn said that she did this based on the data that she had in her office. So there was a separate survey that was undertaken by Mrs. Dunn unilaterally to determine whether or not this was the case or? Thank you. I recall her. Recall that. I had not been aware that there was a weigh station in the gymnasium. I didn't know that she was.
Okay. Go ahead. Good enough?
Our pediatrician is in Massachusetts, but she lives in Rhode Island. But we have been to her recently and asked her what she thought of these results. She was not aware of them. I wonder if we might reach out and ask her, I don't know if she would come every time, but maybe come and weigh in as a Compton resident and a pediatrician. Her first thoughts were that our kids, if you have one child, that there's no place to play with your kids. Like growing up in a city or a cul-de-sac, you would send your kids out, go play with the neighbors. And she has one child and they live on a main road. And her child, like mine, were never allowed, she was never allowed to ride or bite on the road until she was much older. There's not that community play because they're smaller.
Neighborhoods.
Yes, neighborhoods. And also the access to fresh vegetables in the winter, that it's very difficult, even in the summer, they're expensive.
They're very expensive.
And so that if you're traveling out of town to get your groceries once a week, once every two weeks, that you're really warm and sheltered.
Yeah, I think they may want to think about getting a pediatrician or two in here for education.
What's the side business? Okay, so we come to nine, public input on agenda items or future agendas. Anyone? You can all speak when you like, but this is your free time. 10-2, consider discussing vote to approve Rhode Island student survey. So I have Ray, right, Ray?
Yes.
And what's your last name, Ray?
Davis.
I was going to say Davies, but I didn't want to do that.
Davis.
Davis. I don't see any opposition here on the other end, so Rebny might be better to start this if you want to give us a quick of what this survey is. I don't know if we've ever voted on it. I don't think Rita has voted on it. I don't know if Ed has either. Oh, yes, you have. Ed has. I don't think Rita has. So the rest of us are well versed on it. Ed, you recuse yourself.
The 2020, backup, my name's Ray Davis, and I'm the Assistant Director for the Newport County Prevention Coalition. I am a Certified Prevention Specialist Supervisor, and I've been in substance abuse prevention in Newport County for the last 20 years. This survey is required by the Department of Behavioral Health Development, Disabilities and Hospitals, which oversees all the prevention coalitions in the state of Rhode Island. This particular survey also has been, if this is my word, it's probably a little wrong word, mandated by the Rhode Island Department of Education as well to all the communities to participate in that. The survey is exactly the same as the survey was last year. It is completely confidential. There is no identifying information on this survey in any way about an individual. The surveys are intended for the grades that they're saying in the overall thing is from six through 12. The median grade is only at eight through 12. I know my, I was the coordinator at Portsmouth for seven and for seven and a half years, and that was all seven to 12 grades. The purpose of this survey is to get a scientific picture of what are the substance abuse issues with adolescents in your community and in this county and in the state of Rhode Island. That information is used for prevention, people to be able to advise the schools, the town government, the town agencies, on what are the things we need to target and what are the best ways to target those things to be able to employ programming and policies that are proven to be a difference in those substance abuses. The policy, the surveys look at not only actual use, but perception. What we know in prevention world and in addiction is perception drives use. If kids think that everybody's smoking pot and getting high, that they're liable to do more of the same thing. Same thing with any other substance. Baking is a great example of something that's going on now. These surveys are used to look at those specific causes and perceptions and what can we do as communities to be able to address that. The information is not used to compare one school to another school. And to my knowledge, as long as I was involved with this, it was never something that was released to the public without, you know, thorough information given to school committees and to town councils. It's not comparing one place against another. It's what are the issues that we're facing? And we find out by doing this that, you know, issues are usually very much similar. This information is what is used to apply for grants through the state, through private institutions and through the federal government. And that is the information that drives all the grant funding.
Thank you. Go ahead. So, Ed, I'm going to go, you recall what, because I know we had a big discussion about it. And we had an amendment, didn't we? What did we decide? Do you remember?
I recall John's concern was about the suicide questions in particular.
So that's 18, 19, 20?
It's 18, 19, 21.
Carol, you remember what we did?
Yeah, the issue is, is that these questions ask kids, these questions ask kids very, questions that if they answer yes to are, should be very concerning and think that kids should be provided with mental health services. And the fact that they are anonymous, they, kids may not realize that they're anonymous and a kid may use this form of saying, "This is, I can check this off and someone's going to help me." Second of all, even if a kid does not want to get help, the fact that they check it off, they knew that we as adults should be convened and provide help. And I am frankly disappointed that BHDBH is more interested in collecting data than helping kids by including questions that do not have some sort of, you know, very clear, "If you check yes, please raise your hand and tell your teacher," or "Please report." And I know why BHDBH doesn't ask that, because they don't want the kids to answer it differently. And the problem I have is, is a kid who says, "Yes, I have made a plan to attempt suicide in the last 12 months," and checks off yes, and then it is treated anonymously, and the kid ends up committing suicide. I just find that incredibly troubling.
Did we have an amendment?
More of it.
What was our amendment, Carol?
Last time this was voted on, the motion was amended to approve the survey, subject to parents being provided the survey in its entirety in advance, that it be subject to superintendent and or principal formulating language directing those who may be suicidating to appropriate resources and time of the survey, and that it require active permission.
That's what I exactly remember.
Rather than passive consent.
Ed, can we do that again? I would imagine that, I think that's appropriate. I remember the discussion that we had, and we voted for that, didn't we? So it still allows us to get grant money and it still allows us to do the survey, right?
Yes.
If we do, if we amend it like this? Am I wrong?
I, I don't see why I would.
Am I wrong? Sorry.
I don't think so.
What do you recall?
I cannot speak.
You can't, you can't speak to us?
Can I?
Someone speak to us.
Just my observation is when we require the active consent, we won't get 100% of people responding. Just, that was one of the issues of getting people to respond.
Right. But you just heard a discuss, you just heard a discussion about people who did not know that their kids were being BMI and parents who were a little surprised about that. Now you're asking kids about, are you, have you considered suicide in the last year and parents doing that?
Ed, during my question. Is it the case that 100% participation is required to be eligible for the grant funding?
That's a good question that, the anticipation is for at least a 60% return on that. Without that, the statistics of that particular school are not included because it won't give us a valid picture to base information on. I would like, if I could make a comment.
Go ahead, Ray.
In my experience, the 20 years doing this work, anytime a survey like this is being administered to an adolescent, there had, pardon me, damn well better be an explanation given in that classroom about if any of these, any of these questions are a point of concern for an individual, any of the students, any young person, that there are people available in that school that day at that time and continuing to be able to talk to about this. It's not just answer and, not just answer this question and the only thing that counts is the answer. It's the fact that there are people available in that school to be able to respond if someone does ask a question. And to tie this even closer is, as a result of that very unfortunate incident in Portsmouth High School with that student, one of the things that's been instituted, not only in Portsmouth High School, but through all the prevention coalitions, is that we have all been required to take certification training from Bradley Hospital and lifespan on identifying mental health issues with adolescents and adults. And staff at Portsmouth High School, I know, have been required to, of course, with several of them as well. The fact of asking that question, or any of the questions that we ask, is to give us an idea of what is, what are the issues that we really need to focus on, because without that response, we're just guessing at what we, what we think we see. And I'll tell you, in my experience, that data, based on the survey results as well as extensive focus groups that you had mentioned earlier, were able for us to be able to get the attention of the powers that be and help us to be able to do something about it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think there's also a, in my clinical experience, there's often a fear or an assumption that if you ask a child about suicide, you are putting an idea in their mind and they might never have thought about it. And that is just absolutely not the case.
I think I missed in the beginning, what were the ages that we are recommending participate?
The survey itself asks for six through 12, seven through 12 is possible. I think it says in here specifically, they definitely need eight through 12.
We did that amendment a few years back. Did you get over 60% participation?
It's my understanding, this is what correctly comes along, that initially we didn't, but then when we reached out to parents who hadn't responded at all, who some just didn't get the memo, we were able to get just over 60%.
It was right back.
Yeah.
So it's not surprising that the parents don't pay attention to this stuff.
And we, they actually need all the time.
Ray, go ahead.
Students are allowed to not answer any question. They don't have to answer all of them. They can, if they're uncomfortable or don't feel like, they do not have to answer a question.
So I'll ask for this then. I consider a vote to, where am I? My 10.2? I consider a vote to approve Rhode Island student survey.
I have a motion.
I have a second. I will second it. Discussion.
I just have a really picky thing to mention.
Go ahead.
In the fourth sentence where it says, "There is no right or wrong answers," if that could just be reconciled, if this is an educational document, it just really bothers me. Thank you.
I'll make sure that that information gets relayed to where it belongs.
So I have a motion and a second. Does anyone like to make any amendments to this or before I call a vote?
I would not like to necessarily amend it, but offer a, an alternate motion, which would be that we approve subject to the same conditions that we required the survey last time that it was administered.
Alternate motion, those are the two words I was grasping for. Thank you. Are you making that motion? An alternate motion?
Are you making that motion?
Would you like to read that? Would you like to read that ex-motion?
Sure. An alternate motion was made by Mr. Bowen to approve the survey.
Yeah.
Approve the survey, subject to parents being provided the survey in its entirety in advance, that it be subject to the superintendent and or principal formulating language directing those who may be suicidating to appropriate resources at the time of the survey, and that it require active permission.
So I need a second for that motion. Correct? I'll second it. Discussion on the motion, on the alter, on the alternate motion. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Go ahead, three. Did you vote?
I'm not sure what question I need to ask here. I want a little more clarification, if you don't mind, I know I shouldn't have some discussion, but when this test is administered, it is administered and the students are told there are resources here. They're not left feeling like, "I just answered these questions." There are resources and they're told about.
There certainly should be. I mean, I think that, my understanding is that wherever that's, wherever that is administered at, that those are instructions that have to be discussed prior to beginning taking the survey.
We know that's what happens. The, I guess it was not last school year or the year before when it was administered. It was administered by Mrs. Anthony, who was our guy responsible at the time. And I would follow with similar protocol and have Mrs. Miller.
And it's, I would follow with similar protocol and have Mrs. Miller, who's our school council, to be the person to administer it. So those types of admissions or sets of suggestions to the kids would definitely have full confidence with me shared with the kids. I think our kids are very comfortable going to the people. They do it often.
Right. And it was a small population of kids. And we are at risk of getting less than the 60% if we try to get parents to read the letters that are sent and try to get.
And try for active consent, that's a possibility. Just based on my experience of trying to get it in this.
Do I take that motion again? Or I just ask, read as a vote?
No, just sit down.
Okay, so the amendment doesn't pass. Are you correct? Miss Smith, no.
That's correct.
So that does not pass. So I'll go back to the original. I was, yeah, I was, aye. So that fails, the alternate motion fails, so go back to the original motion. The original motion is on the table to vote to approve the Rhode Island student survey. I have a motion and a second. A little roll call on this one.
So the motion is to approve the Rhode Island student survey. Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Ms. Porter?
Hi.
Is he here?
Hi.
Mr. McHugh?
Aye. All right, that passes. Thank you, Ray.
I have to add one thing.
Sure.
The Newport County Prevention Coalition is making a donation to every school that completes 60% return of $300 to that school for whatever purpose they wish to use it for. So it's incentive to thank the school board for doing this.
You're right. Thanks for taking the drive down.
That's quite right. I like coming down here. Thank you very much.
Okay, 10.3, I've got a note, table. Do I have to read that whole thing, Attorney Anderson? 10.3, table? Is that enough?
I'm sorry.
Do I have to read the whole thing?
Consider a vote to amend the student survey.
Do I need to read the whole thing, or are you going to say table? I'm going to read it.
Is your plan to table it?
Our plan is to table it. Do I need to take a vote? I don't need to take a vote on, is that right?
Unless I'm being objected.
Oh, okay, 10.3 is going to be tabled. Any objections? Not seeing any. 10, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm only asking why in that it seems necessary, because it's incorporated into the student enrollment.
Go ahead. I was just written tabled here. Those folks can answer that.
What I asked of Mrs. McHugh this morning was that I felt that I need a little bit more time to get those pieces in line. I also respectfully request that you schedule a meeting before your next meeting for the purposes of partnering, because we still have at least two positions that we may need to hire for the start of the school year, and I'd like to not wait until mid-August. So I guess I would like to table that until then, to the end of this month, beginning of next month, knowing that we also need to take care of the hiring. So I would do those two things plus, and that gets us within the timeline.
Plus the handbook.
Correct. Those three things.
Excuse me, can I ask about?
Sure, go ahead.
The delay in hiring?
We're, we're at the very end of the process for the band, for the band person, and we're smack down in the middle of my math teacher hiring. The interviews for that are tomorrow. And we've been very active in doing a performance-based piece too, where we're asking the applicants to come back and teach a lesson, learn to demonstrate their craft somehow. So that will be a part of the process too, but it was just not possible to get it done before this meeting.
Great, next.
Any other discussion on that? Going to table that. 10.4, going to table this one too, unless there's an objection. No, I don't see any. 10.5, consider discussing vote to amend the distribution policy. This is a second read, so there will be a vote.
Paris, oh, I can't possibly read it. I'm here, but my, we added language that requires any flyers or materials being distributed to have the group who is distributing them be identified and for the principal to initial each page.
It's nice, I, you zoom that in there, very nice. I consider a vote to amend the distribution policy. Go ahead, motion?
I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Have any further discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, that passes. 10.6, I've got another table on this one, unless there is an objection. This is a first read. Consider, discuss to amend the use of the facilities policy. Edward?
Three items, I believe. The first is to align the first paragraph and the whole facilities policy with the section of the town charter, the recreation committee. So it adds the language, subject to section 709 of the town charter. The first paragraph and following control. The second matter is to strike 4B in its entirety. The third change is to add under 4D, that the superintendent may waive this requirement, and is a per discussion. And the final, so there were four in total, the final change is to strike under procedures for applying, comma, approved, colon, to strike 4.
It's a first read, any discussion? I know. Hey, guys. Bonster dinner. That's what I thought. Okay, that's the first read. You'll see that again. Okay, 10.8. This is also a first read. Consider and discuss to amend the field trip policy. Here it is. Ed?
Oh, thank you.
I welcome.
We are in, thank you, Carol. We are substituting under a chaperones, four. Substituting chaperone for attend. So we will read, parents slash guardians are encouraged to chaperone field trips where appropriate.
So that, that discards any, any hangers-on? Is that what that is? Those parent hanger-ons to those field trips. Is that the only thing on there? On that?
I believe, oh, sorry. And also to add in here.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. But to add wording, there shall be a fund to provide financial assistance so that all students may participate. So establish a fund for people who are facing financial hardship in terms of attending a field trip, and we will need to ask Mr. McCall at a future meeting, a refund.
Is that a school committee joke?
It's a bookkeeper joke.
Is that an accountant joke? Accountant jokes, okay. All right, 10.9, consider discussing vote to approve any requests for administration or legal counsel. Anyone want to task these people to do something? Not seeing any, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.